All set and attendance? Okay, we have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. There's a four one and four two talking about the cold solar eclipse and potential action. I'd entertain a motion to accept the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four school board meeting minutes. Robin, do we have a second? Phoebe, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tina?
Yeah.
Andrew?
Yes.
Chantel?
Upstee.
Robin?
Yes.
Skylar?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tasha?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bebe?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And New York City trip, Kim?
Do I, I hold it, is that the key? Got it. I am here today to ask for kind of permission for three trips that are happening soon, very soon, and not so soon. The first is our annual New York City trip, we call it the Humanities Trip. We have done this trip every year for, I think, thirty years, starting at Livermore Falls. The only time we have not done it is during COVID. So we brought back the trip last year. This year, we're doing the trip to see the musical Wicked, which is absolutely a favorite of lots of people and a lot of kids are very excited about that show. We go for twenty-four hours, we leave here at six AM, we return at six AM. We spend fourteen of those twenty-four hours on the bus. And the rest of the time, we spend in New York City in small groups, where kids can kind of explore the city and do what they choose. And then we all meet together to see the show in the evening. On that second day, we do not expect kids to be in school. They do, however, have to attend a some mandatory time where we learn a little bit about New York City. We learn about the show that we're going to see, in which case wicked has a lot that we can discuss and look at from Frank Baum all the way up to the current novel and play and soon to be movie. So there's a lot for us to look at. So that is our first trip. And I think then, do I stop and you do something? Or do I continue and you do them all at once?
Well, I think, I think what we'll do is we're going to entertain a motion. That way, the board can ask you questions and you can respond. Then we'll go to the next one.
Perfect, that sounds great.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Phoebe?
I would like to move that we approve the NYC trip for the spring of twenty twenty four.
And that's seconded by Chantel. Any questions by the board members? Tina?
How many kids we got going?
So I do know that answer. So there's a total of fifty-five that can fit on a bus. We bring about six or seven chaperones, I think generally seven chaperones, and around forty-sevens or so students, depending on what we have. So it is open to juniors and seniors first. And then if we do not fill the bus, we open it up to sophomores to attend. And I forgot to mention, I do think it's important to know that the cost of the trip is about two hundred and thirty dollars per student. That includes the ticket to the show and wicked is not a cheap show. It's one of the reasons we haven't done wicked in a while. But I was able to get great seats at a fairly decent price. And this year, we got a much better deal on our bus than we've had in the past two years, which enabled us to see a little bit like fancier of a show. Last year, we did a much less expensive show because the bus was outrageous. I think it's about three thousand dollars less this year. Students can raise money by selling poinsettias at Christmas time. And then they're generally given a period of time to have a deposit to secure their spot and then pay the balance. And then they are responsible for paying for their meals while they're there. So it's not, it's open to everyone, but there is a financial obligation. However, a student that really wants to go can raise the money. And we've had lots of students do that in the past, so.
Joel?
So, and you may have said this and I might have missed it. So when you say spring of twenty twenty four, we're basically in spring of twenty twenty four now.
Correct.
Do you have a date? And, and when you talk about numbers, is that numbers set yet? Or are they still applying to go?
So excellent question, Joel. The date of the trip is May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. We have always kind of gone on a Tuesday and Wednesday when it's cheaper and less busy in New York City for traffic. And that's kind of right before all the senior stuff starts to happen. We have just opened up the trip like last week. So students are currently signing up for the trip. One of the reasons, so, and normally, we generally ask for permission way before now. But I think this year, for some reason, it was like this crazy whirlwind where we could, we did not know what show we wanted to see. It's a weird kind of year on Broadway. There's a lot of like iffy things that we were like, would kids want to see that? Would we want to see that? So when we finally made our decision, everything from that point went super quickly. Like, okay, yes, you can have the tickets, you need to pay for them tomorrow. Like, it was that sort of fast. So we had to kind of spring into action and secure those things with the understanding that it was definitely going to be happening. So please, please approve this trip. But right now, we have twenty-seven students already signed up with deposits. We are hoping that we'll have some more tomorrow. And then we will start to say, if we don't have more people, we will open it up to sophomores from that point. Generally, we have not had to go beyond sophomores. They're usually happy to step up. Hopefully, that answered all of your questions.
Any more board questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tasha?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Bebe?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Chantel?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Skylar?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
So moved. Now Europe.
Now, this one is the soonest that I mentioned. And I'm going to owe this to like COVID brain. I have been talking to Scott about this trip for more than two years, but somehow forgot to talk to you for more than two years. We have a Europe trip that leaves in eleven days. It is going to England, Ireland, and Scotland. And I totally thought that I had already gotten board approval two years ago. Like, in my head, that had happened until I went to ask to be put on the agenda for the New York trip and realized, wait, have you gotten approval for the Europe trip? And we determined that that did not happen. So I am now asking for approval for the Europe trip. I would love to tell you about that. We have forty-seven people who will be traveling to Dublin, Edinburgh, and London on April, from April twelfth to April twenty-second. It is an eleven-day trip with basically three days in each country. We started with this trip two years ago, so in May of twenty twenty-two. So students, and actually, we had not done a Europe trip in a few years because of COVID. And I was not exactly sure how a Europe trip would go. I filled a bus the, within two days of announcing the trip. So the trip was full in two days, which means that forty-seven, well, not my chaperones, but forty-two people or so paid their deposit and signed up like that next day. So it was very well received and the community definitely supports those trips and sending students to them. We have out of that forty-seven, twenty-seven are students and twenty are adults. Six are chaperones and fourteen are parents or other family members, grandparents, et cetera, of students. And we have adults go on these trips because it's a great, safe way to travel with their kids, that they don't have to worry about all of those other things that you have to worry about if you're traveling to a foreign country. And if you've never traveled outside of the United States, it can be really scary. So one of the things that we do these trips for is to show people that actually traveling out of the United States is really not scary. It's wonderful and it gives them confidence to travel more in their adult lives and, and travel with their families more too. This trip, I'm, I'm not exactly sure because the price changes over two years. So I know what the price now would be to join, but I think the price was around three thousand six hundred dollars per student. Because we had two years to prepare, students had two years to fundraise. And they also had two years to like work and make money. So those kids who were working babysitting or at McDonald's had a full two years to be able to pay. And we had a record-breaking mum sale where like this entire cafeteria, what, from stage all the way to the back was filled with mums. We sold thousands of mums. I don't even know how that's possible. But the kids did it and we raised like almost seven thousand dollars, I think, just from that one fundraiser. All of that money goes to supplement students' trips. It will never pay for a student's trip. If we were going to do fundraising to pay for trips, we would never be able to go. So like that six thousand dollars is a lot, but that would only pay for one and a half kids to go on a trip. So what it does pay for is our transportation to and from the airport. It pays for all of their tips and stuff while they're over there. And then whatever else they make during that time goes right back to them to be able to spend on their food or whatever when they get there. So that they don't have to worry about having that extra money at the end of that two years. So that is pretty much where that is now. I, you, I probably did not say anything, everything, so if you have questions.
Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the Europe trip for April of twenty twenty four.
Do you want to include the spring of twenty-six or no?
Spring of twenty, oh, yes, thank you. Duh, let's do both.
Just so you know, we're going to be going to Spain in spring of twenty twenty-six.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Chantel? Any questions? Joel's thinking. Go ahead.
Oh, just, I mean, this is first time we've talked about an international trip, I guess, in a while, so. I mean, I'm impressed, A, you got that group and everything else like that, so very good there. And I assume you're going through all the things as far as making sure they have all the right passports and everything else like that and everyone's got, because that's a crazy part of this world nowadays.
Absolutely. So I travel exclusively through the company EF Tours. And there's a reason why I do that, because I know that their safety and their like worldwide network is crazy amazing. EF Tours takes control of a lot of that stuff and gives me a very detailed list of everything that I need, so.
They're basically managing the trip for you.
Correct.
Okay, that's excellent.
So I do have, I personally have copies of everyone's passports, medical information, if there is an emergency, so that I can get it to whoever I need to at that moment. But students will also, like, we, you have two school board members who are going on this trip. And they will be wearing these, they wear bracelets that have a number on them that connects them immediately to somebody. If they call EF, they get right in charge with our tour guide, who gets right in charge with me, in, in contact with me. It is like a very well-oiled machine. And these girls will realize it. But once you've done a few of these trips, you, the, the organization and how it works, you kind of get a system down that works really well. And I break my kids into groups by chaperone. Each chaperone is in charge of just kind of knowing where kids are and making sure they get on a subway or on a bus or have their passports. So that I don't have to worry about all forty-seven. I am worried about my little group of six. And each of my chaperones is worried about their little group. And then we can quickly and easily move through. Getting forty-seven people in and out of places on a subway, in the airport, is a, an absolute crazy thing. So being able to do that efficiently is a really cool thing. So it's going to be a great trip. And obviously, we, we're taking up a whole bus, so we're kind of, there's no other schools traveling with us. We have the whole tour guide to ourselves and can pretty much do what we want, which is nice.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Holly? Robin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Bebe?
Yes.
Chantel?
Yes.
Tina?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Elena?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Tasha?
Yes.
Skylar?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure that these two have mentioned our good news during your comments. I figured you would, but I just want to make sure.
Okay, public comment, Roger.
Okay, I come here tonight more furious than I've ever been when I come to these meetings. I got a phone call Monday night from a board member who let me know I made a mistake. That wasn't the words they used, but they told me I made a mistake that one of your board members was going to present a motion to move the book up to the middle school minus one copy that was going to be left behind the library teacher's desk for fifth graders only. I was told that my speech changed their mind. There's two very large problems with that. For one, my speech should never, ever, ever allow you to negatively affect my children. It should only allow you to positively accept, uh, uh, affect my children. If it will allow you to negatively affect my children, I'm asking you right now to please resign. Secondly, it proves that there was a quorum before the vote. I was told that Robin Beck was going to make that introduction and that Elaine Fitzgerald was going to second it. Well, Bob Staples is the one who called me and told me that. So if you, apparently Elaine's calling Bob a liar. I'm going to ask the three of you to resign effective immediately. And if you don't, I am going above you. You can laugh, Elaine, Bob's not going to lie to me about that.
Roger, first of all, three is not a quorum, we didn't meet, and seven's a quorum, so get your facts straight.
Okay, well, still, those discussions should not happen before a meeting. That is against your policy, ethics, and main state law. You are not supposed to devise motions before you're sitting here at the meeting. And you know that, sir. I am asking you to resign, and you're smiling about that. You think that's, you think that's a good thing, that you guys decided to leave this for eight-year-olds because I made you angry? That's acceptable to you? And secondly, okay, last time, Tina, you read our school policy on the library, when I had just said that it wouldn't filter out Hustler. And you said if you can't find something in that policy that would allow you to remove the book, you would not. So I'm asking you now, if you found Hustler in the high school library, would you remove it? Or would you say no, because the policy doesn't have a spot in there that, that directly says it needs to be removed?
This is comment, this isn't discussion.
I'm asking her to answer me, and I think it's a valid question.
This is your comment time, time for you to comment. It's not time for discussion back and forth through the board.
Okay, so I guess I'll just continue to repeat that I'm asking the three of you to resign because you very clearly had your mind made up before the meeting. You can shake your head, but Bob Staples ain't going to call and lie to me, Elaine. Y'all need to go. If you don't have the children's best interests in mind, get away. If something I do convinces you to change what, doing what is right for children, you're a pathetic human being and you need to go away.
Superintendent's report.
Good evening. Met with the association, we discussed next year's calendar possibilities. We discussed the new Family Medical Leave Act law, and we also discussed the eclipse. Met with our high school counsels, counselors, along with Kathy Doyon and Leanna Lavoy from Main Health Organization to be put together an application for a five-year grant for drug-free communities. I attended our district safety meeting to discuss safety concerns in each building, as well as protocols that need to be reviewed. Also, during the past two weeks, I met with Representative Sheila Lyman to discuss bills before our state legislature connected to education. Starting next week, anonymous surveys will go out to student staffs and parents with questions about bullying.
Questions or comments for Scott?
When we send it out, we'll make sure you guys get it as well, because it'll go out by robo-email.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, administrative reports, Pat. My bad. Sorry, ladies.
Okay, good evening. Since the last time we spoke, a few things have happened. As you know, the one act team came in first for regionals and they came in third for the state competition in Millinocket for Class B. Also, congrats to Gabby Smith and Derek Jake for winning individual all-cast awards. And then spring sports also started this Monday, so everyone's really excited for that. And the third quarter ends this Friday, so with grades closing, we know the students are working very hard with their academics. That's all.
And I obviously skipped over completely board member comments, so I apologize for that. Any board members that has? Chantel?
Congratulations on the one-acts win. That is amazing. I still think about like, and on the Humanities Trip, I think I was the last class to see Wicked in Livermore Falls. It was amazing. So just keep it up, you guys are doing awesome.
Phoebe?
All right, this past Tuesday, I was fortunate enough to be able to go to the State House to meet with the Senate as, the intention was to also be with the House of Representatives. We did briefly meet with the governor as well, where we were to discuss schools as well as funding and other information. Unfortunately, the House of Representatives did have a medical emergency, so they did not have a quorum. So we weren't able to meet with them. But we did get to have a tour of everything and we did get to see some students, be able to be honorary pages for the day and be able to look at the different system that our government has in place. So it was very interesting going from the school to the State House and seeing how they intertwine together. We were able to give letters to different representatives that weren't there. They did have people who were there to do that, to be able to get the word out to help support our public schools. So we were very pleased with that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Andrea?
I was pleased to see in the Lewis and paper this past week that Speller Huck Dubey made the twelve of fourteen rounds in the state spelling bee, which I think is outstanding accomplishment. I don't want to step on Mr. Target's toes if he was going to be bringing that up, but I think it's nice that we have a positive message like this in the paper, seeing out and that we have some outstanding students and we are doing the right things.
Anyone else? Okay. Did I skip anything else? Administrative reports, Pat.
I can use the steps. Good evening. So last week, I have to thank Chris, which hurts my soul a little bit. But he invited us up, the elementary up to see the play. Got to give Mr. Labonte and all of the kids a huge round of applause. They were so amazing. And I know the third, fourth, and fifth graders loved it. It's the, probably the longest I've seen them quiet in a while. So, and they did such a great job and it was great to see my former students and realize how much shorter I've gotten as I shrink in my old age, I guess. And they've become giant. On that front, auditions for the elementary school play will be April twenty-third. Rehearsals will be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we're looking at May twenty-ninth to have the, the play available to the parents and community. Fourth grade, fourth grade's been tromping through the woods. Fourth grade, fourth grade's been tromping through the woods, teaching the kids about sap and collecting sap and boiling sap and bringing me some nice, after they boiled it down, and they got to have some pancakes and pour it on whatever they wanted, but they thought they should share it with me, and it was so good. Like, it was outstanding. I'm like, you guys might have a future in this. To go along with our greenhouse, the rev grant, we're in the process. I just ordered 45 pairs of snowshoes for next year. We'll be ordering another 45 pairs so that we can get the kids out into the woods in the winter. We did the winter kids a few years ago, and I was, I was a little surprised that how many kids had never been on snowshoes and how much fun they had when we took them down to French Falls and let them run around in the snowshoes. So we'll have enough for classes to be able to take their kids out into the woods. And at 90 pairs, I mean, that's almost a grade level, so pretty excited about that. Our Read-a-thon is coming to a close, and last year I dressed up as a leprechaun. And this year, the kids, I was talking to kids and whatever, and I, I don't know why, but they wanted to shave my head. And I said, I don't really have the body for a shaved head. So I, I said, well, I better ask my wife, and I went, and I literally didn't get it out of my wife and my, out of my mouth, and my wife was like, no. You are not shaving your head. I do not want to be married to Uncle Fester. And I was like, geez, dear. So. But you got a different body type. So, well, I'm just. So some of the kids had thought about, like, dying my beard. They're like, you got a lot of gray. We could dye your beard and your hair. And I'm like, I think my wife will be good with that. So they will be dying my hair because last year, the kids raised $8,390. This year, they had to beat it. So far, they've raised $8,900. So I will be getting, I'm not sure what color yet, because I have to talk to the individual. They don't know that they're choosing, but they'll find out tomorrow. They get to choose what color, and they will be dying my hair and beard. So, Read-a-thon. Maybe. I'll, I'll send it out when I know when it's going to happen. And then, as far as school numbers, last time I was in front of you, we had 289 students, and now we have 286. Questions? Yes. We use it for anything I do for kids, that's where the money goes. Like, we bought two Gaga ball pits. We have one outside for the kids. We have one inside for gym, because the kids love it. It's like dodgeball, but like, like waist down, so you don't have to worry about kids getting drilled in the head or like that. End of the year, when we do our field day, it goes for all of that. Anytime during the year I provide pizza or whatever, candy, snacks, whatever, it all comes from that. It all goes. I try to give as much back as I can for the kids. And like, if we do a trip and I need to supplement it, that's where it comes from. We put all new backboards on the playground. I did that, all the balls and that kind of equipment that the kids want. Because kids will come and say, oh, I'd really like to have, they wanted a tether ball. I'm like, all right. So I bought tether balls and had them put up. So kids ask me, we have cornball, or not cornball, cornhole. So I bought some cornholes for the kids. So whatever the kids ask, and if I can find it, and where I don't feel like I'm spending, like, too much money, because I'm kind of cheap, I get it for the kids. So that's what I use the money for.
Phoebe?
Uh-oh.
I love how involved you get with us, like, the leprechaun suit. That was perfect. I can't wait to see the beard now. If you need ideas in the future, I do have a snowman costume, a chicken costume, like, you know, you know. I, I do. I do have a chicken costume. And you know me, you, you've seen Dante go through your school, and spirit day is always like our big thing. But if you need help with costume suggestions, I do have costumes that will fit you.
You're not the first person that has mentioned Santa Claus to me, and I'm not sure why.
Oh, it's a Frosty the Snowman costume. I've, I've worn it multiple times. It's a lot of blast, especially if you hold really still when the bus comes, and then you turn around. The kids love it.
I might have to take that one next year.
Anyone else? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Cherry?
Hello. Sorry, I have to move this. I feel like it's going to poke me in the eye. So in special education, we currently have 355 students. This is including 23 in referral. This is a decrease of eight students overall in special education since last month. The referrals are up by seven, and will likely continue to increase. This is the busy time of year in special education as we are reviewing the fall referrals and determining eligibility. We're getting all the new referrals from the data collected by the teachers throughout the school year. We currently have 71 students at the primary school with IEPs. That's down one. The elementary school has 83, which is the same as last month. Middle school has 95, and the high school has 106, which, the middle school is down two, and the high school is down five. We continue to have 14 students in out-of-district special purpose schools for day treatment programming. That's the same number as the last month, and we're continuing to work with it, one of the schools to bring a student back. We have our next meeting tomorrow, actually. As you all know, we're in the process of a special education audit by the Office of Special Education, Special Services and Inclusive Education through the Maine Department of Ed. In February, our preliminary findings were eight corrections in five areas. So those corrections were done by the case managers, some of our special ed teachers, and submitted on Monday, and those were improved, approved, and closed this week. So the next step is in, by the end of April, I'll receive a corrective action plan from the state for those things that we were less than 80% compliant on. And we will have until February of 2025 to meet those correction items. Also, in April, we'll be score, we'll receive a score of one through four, with one being the best. One is, the, the team shared with us that one is hard to get, but we're definitely not a four. So I don't know what that means. But with each of those, there is training that we have to participate in, as well as it determines the number of years before we're reviewed again. So if we get a one, it's six years before our next audit. If we get a two or a three, it's four years before the next audit. A four would be we re-audit in two years, but we won't be there. During the two workshop days in March, we had an additional 20 staff members participate in initial safety care training, which is the de-escalation program that makes us Chapter 33 restraint and seclusion compliant. We have a total of 57 staff members district-wide trained in the de-escalation modules, and 12 staff members are also trained in the physical restraint modules. Physical restraint is only used when there's imminent risk of serious physical harm or injury to a student or others. So that's why the, we have significantly fewer people trained with restraint. But there are some in each building. Also, during the March workshop days, Jenna and I did an overview training for all the staff on the similarities and differences between Section 504 and special education, as well as the process for both programs that, the referral process for both programs that provide services to students with disabilities. This seemed to be very well received by the district staff. We did share our slideshow through Google Drive with all of the staff members in the district. So if there are any board members that are interested in knowing more about these two things, we would gladly share that with you as well. So just let us know.
Questions, comments? Tina?
Can you give me some idea of what kinds of things were being flagged in that audit?
Sure. The way our girl, our goals are worded was flagged in the audit. So if we didn't, if we didn't focus on a specific skill and we wanted the outcome. So if we wanted them to complete their homework, that's an outcome-based, well, what skill are we going to teach to get them to complete their homework? That's one of the things that was flagged. Also, there has to be, if there is a service that we're providing, so if we're providing reading instruction, there has to be a goal. And we also had, in one section of the IEP, have to identify the reading skill as a weakness. So there's multiple areas of an IEP that have to match. And all, let's see, the other one was, goals have to change from year to year with rigor. Even if they don't, if their goal was to meet something at 80%, and they only met it at 50%, we still have to change the rigor of that goal up to their new baseline and how we're going to teach them different so that they finish meeting the rest of the way. So progress from year to year.
How big of a time and effort investment do you see it taking for, for the school district to be fully in compliance with, with the expectations from the state?
This year, we made a lot of changes that we implemented in October based on the most recent training. So this year, there was definitely a significant amount of time put in because our teachers had to learn a new way, right? They couldn't just go with the same old process that they've been writing IEPs with. So there was definitely some more significant time put in this year. Probably to prepare, to prepare and complete paperwork for one IEP meeting is about an hour and a half of work for each meeting.
And you don't see that substantially changing because of this?
I don't. No.
Thank you.
Robin?
Cherry, how staffing, your staffing?
We're down two teachers at the high school, two special education teachers. We have two ed tech positions open, ed tech twos open at the middle school, and currently have an ed tech one position open at the primary school. We have fantastic long-term subs at the high school, so we have been fortunate with that.
Anyone else? Thank you. Michael?
Good evening. I'll open up with enrollment numbers. The last time we met, we were at 361. We lost a student, so we're at 360, hoping to find him eventually. We seem to be hovering around those numbers, right at 360. Yeah, yeah, don't, don't put that in the paper, please. We're, we seem to be staying right at that 360, 361 all year, just going back and forth. Give you an update on our Reading is Sweet challenge. The student's goal was to read 5,000 books in the month of May, I mean, the month of March. We're, we're in March still. And if they met that goal, they were going to turn me into a human Sunday. We're three weeks in, so we've, this week here, we haven't totaled yet, but so far, they've read 5,500 books. So they've already hit their goal. So sometime in April, and I'll get the details out to everyone, they'll be turning me into a human Sunday. So that should be fun. I also want to give a shout out to Sherry Parker and Jenna Cody for their training that she mentioned just a few minutes ago. It was, I think, by far, one of the better, the better trainings we've had as a whole staff. Just going to sit down, and everyone hears the same language, understands the process a little better. So hoping we see some continued trainings like that going forward. Kindergarten administration is next week, so Thursday and Friday, the fourth and the fifth. So there'll be no school for the, our kindergarten students that day, so the teachers can screen all the new students coming in. And that includes our transitional kindergarten as well. And Mr. Sinclair mentioned it. Just want to give also a shout out to Mr. Labonte and his drama club. I'm not sure what he calls the class he runs. It was one of the better specials I've seen put on. And we take our students to the movies every spring for one of our PBIS rewards. And where they're in a movie theater, they have popcorn and soda, and they're watching the movie. And we still have kids that are up and down or wanting to go to the bathroom or this or that. They are. Little Mermaid Jr., you could hear the pin drop the entire time. Kids were just sitting there on the floor, just glued to the stage. So it was, it was fantastic job. And I'd also want to give a shout out to one of our TK teachers, Brandy Latham. She was named a semifinalist for Anderson County Teacher of the Year. And she's just getting ready to submit to hopefully go on to be a finalist for Anderson County Teacher of the Year.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
TJ?
My phone's shut down. Here we go. Oh, there you are. So, thank you, guys. Good, good evening, and we have, I, I want to also just make sure we can announce how well our kids did for the theater one-act plays. And I know they've already mentioned it, but the amount of work that goes into that and the amount of preparation. When I went to the first show down south, it was for the regional finals. I was rolling in my seat. It was that funny and riveting. The kids were energetic. They were running back. It was, it was amazing. And I hope that we can do it at another time. I thought it was a really good one, so. Also, I'll give you my enrollment is 400 right now. The other thing that I'd like to highlight that is, just something that, as administrators, that we've been working on for the last four or five years. And the committee that has created the evaluation process here at the Spruce Mountain District is one of the best things that I've actually been a part of and how well, and how well that community or that committee works together and how well the teachers take feedback and understanding of, of what is needed to be a teacher. I've had some of the best observations in my years here for our teachers. The things they're doing every day in the classroom just gets me excited for our students and our staff. So I want to thank that committee. Also, I gave you the events for the end of the school year. It is busy right after vacation. I hope, I hope you can come out to some of our things that we have. If, and we're going to send out invites to you to come to our honors banquet, to come to our celebrations, our senior celebrations, our scholarship celebrations. Last year, we gave, gave out nearly $250,000 to students. This is one of the most giving communities that I, I have ever seen. And I've worked at multiple different schools in, in the state of Maine, and we are far above the norm. So that's all I have today.
Phoebe?
So just to echo on what you said about it being a very giving community. I do want to just give a shout out to your office staff because I, I didn't want to steal your thunder in my board comment earlier, so I waited. But I do know that you guys paired with other schools to help them with prom dresses as well. And it, that's just, it warms my heart so much that they're all working together to make sure everyone is having a wonderful time. And the fact that that thought entered their mind of, we have this, let's share it, is just so wonderful.
Yeah, and we thank you, too. Anyone else? Holly?
Hi, TJ.
Hi.
We've been back and forth this week on some percentages of graduation stats. I guess in, on social media, it was put out that it was our graduation statistics for 2021 were 63.4%, which I guess that is the correct.
That one is the correct, yes.
Okay. Some of the other numbers are right around the 75% mark. Do you know what the percentage is going to be for 2024?
I, I don't have that number yet, but I can get that to you for our next board meeting and, and give everybody that. Yep.
I just hope we're striving, striving to reach at least in the 90s.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. You know, my goal is always to be in the 90s. We have gone through some times this past four or five years that students, for whatever reason it is, have decided to go to adult ed or to move out of the, out of the town. And when they go to another town, they, they don't go back to school. And, and pulling all those things in, it, it is something that we need to address over the next. And pulling all those things in, it is something that we need to address over the next couple of years. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, though. And thank you for working with me. Yeah. Anyone else? Thank you.
Chris?
Good evening. I'm gonna start with our school enrollment. 323 students, down two since our last meeting. I wanted to say that we're proud of Huck Andrew. He did a great job. He went really far into the spelling bee. Our spring sports are gonna be starting next week. On March 21st, 22nd, the middle school play Little Mermaid was presented. We did it to the elementary, the primary schools, and then we had a couple of open nights. We had a great turnout. Dan figured about 150 to 200 people each night for Thursday and Friday. The kids did really good. We got two awesome up-and-coming singers. I can tell you that. I can't wait to see them when they get up here in high school. Yesterday, we had Senator Susan Collins come in for the Women in History Month. And she delivered a really great message to our student body about coming from small town in Maine and being able to do anything you want. During that, we had, the kids got to ask some questions at the end. And one of our kids asked her, at the time, who is your favorite person to work with throughout all the years in Congress? And her answer was wholehearted and true, and she said Joe Lieberman. At the time that she was saying that Joe Lieberman was actually passing away. So, which was kinda ironic when I got that call later out, later that evening from her staff manager. So, last time I was here, also, I talked about the eighth graders trying to raise some money for the eighth grade trip. So right now, they've been collecting items to auction and raffle off. So far, they've come up with over $3,000 worth of items donated from local businesses around. So on April 5th, from 4:00 to 7:00, come on out. There's some cool items. I mean, we got stuff from free auto detailing to essential oil kits. And it's gonna be pretty neat. So come bid on a lot of stuff, and then we're gonna be raffling off a lot of stuff as well. And plus, they'll have all kinds of food and drink and treats there. We started off, kicked off our spring fundraiser last week. It's gonna go until April 5th. If the students reach the goal, they get to choose, well, they get to choose from a whole bunch of different options. But they brought it down to two. I know the outcome, but I'm not gonna tell them until the end. It was either they have all their teachers kiss a pig, or they're gonna have a school-wide ice cream party, and then they're gonna decorate me like a Sunday. So I guess my kids have been talking with Michael's kids. So then I've got two really kinda exciting things to kinda end on. So earlier this year, our alt-ed program got to go to the Maine Learning Living School in Temple for a day. Well, we've been working with them, and they actually were with the Maine Outdoor Learning Initiative and gave us a free grant, gave us a grant for the kids to go out there and spend one night in two days. And they, Alt Ed just finished reading the book Hatchet, so they're gonna go over there and learn a bunch of those skills. And then, learn a bunch of those skills, and they're also gonna be learning things about composting and all kinds of fun gardening and farming type of things. I just hope they don't run into a bad temper moose in Temple when they're out there. So about two months ago, I started, I got an email from Bryant Pond 4H Camp and Learning Center. And they asked if we were interested in going, bringing our students to their camp. And so I started talking to them, and they said that the trip's gonna, it's three days, three nights, four days. And I was like, okay. So they said, I said, "How much?" And she, they said, "Well, it's $52,500." And I was like, "Wow, that's a lot of money. It's way more than we can, we could ever afford." And I said, "You know, thank you for the opportunity." They said, "Well, hold on. They said, "We'll give you $40,000 grant." And I said, "Wow." I said, "I really appreciate that, but still, $12,500." I said, "Maybe if you give me a year to raise the money." She said, "No, this is a one-time shot. One-time shot, and it's gonna be done by the end of this May." She said, "We'll give you another $10,000." So they're giving us $50,000 out of $52,500 to send our sixth-grade students there for three nights, four days, less than an hour away from here. And the kids, we've actually, some of that fundraising money, that's where the pays for, those kids that have this opportunity pays for us to be able to go Kiev, pays for all this other, other cool and exciting stuff. So they're going to be able to do, at the end of May, they're gonna go for three, they don't know yet. We're gonna announce it to them here shortly. But they're gonna get to do stuff, anything from learning how to canoe, map and compass training, fire and shelter building. They offer hunter safety courses for the kids that wanna do it, archery, zip lining, low ropes, high ropes courses, team-building activities. Then they're also gonna be doing lessons on the forest ecology and water ecology, so.
Questions, comments? Tina, then Andrew?
I, I went to Bryant Pond when I was a kid. And I loved it so much that I couldn't wait when I had kids to send them there. And the place is amazing, and the fact that you got this kind of a deal on it. I just, the experience that those kids will have in that place is so incredibly valuable. I sent my youngest boy there every year that he was able to go, from the time he was old enough. And when he aged out, they brought him back as a counselor in training. And I gotta tell you, that's probably, of all the things I miss about having kids that are school-aged, being able to take them to that camp every summer is one of the biggies that I miss. Good on you for getting that.
I'm super excited for them. Some of these kids will never have that opportunity again.
I can't say enough good about it. That's huge.
Not that I want this to be a Me Too movement, but believe it or not, I went to the same camp too when I was in junior high. It was a prize for being in the science fair when we were in junior high, and it was an amazing, amazing experience. There is plenty to do. There is, you have fun. You don't even realize you're learning things. And I'm glad to see the program is still going on all these years later. There were dinosaurs when I was there. It's an amazing program. I'm glad you're gonna get the kids into it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Tasha?
Yep.
It is gonna be open to all sixth graders. Yep. And it's not gonna cost them anything, so.
Great. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, I have nothing to report on, so we'll go to the adjustment. Scott?
I'm sure you've all heard about the eclipse. Really, this is about public safety concerns. A couple months ago, you know, obviously, we knew about it. It wasn't a big deal. And then we started getting contacted by Franklin County Emergency Management. We've talked to the J chief just yesterday. There's a real concern, 'cause they're not exactly sure how many thousands of people who are gonna be this way, coming through the Route 4 corridor. So out of public safety and to make sure transportation-wise we can get our kids home, I'm recommending that we have half a day of school. You'll probably be reading in the paper, there are other local schools around us doing the exact same thing. It's exciting and interesting at the same time, but I'm sure if you work for public safety, it might not be all that exciting at this point in time because they really don't know. Every time we talk to somebody, the number keeps getting higher and higher on how many people might be coming through the area. So that's why that recommendation to have a half-day so that kids can be home safe. And if you hadn't already heard, Rob Taylor has gotten safety glasses, special viewing glasses for all our students. They'll have them before they leave on that Monday, so. Andrew just sent out a reminder. They're also available at the J Town office as well for classes. Four bucks a piece.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we allow the kids off on Monday, the 8th, April 8th, at a half-day.
Tina seconds. Jody?
Do you know if the after-school program would run on that day for some parents that are not anticipating this in a week?
I know Rob is, some of the administrators were reaching out as well to the instructor who's been running the program because part of Rob's thing that he was gonna do at French Falls was gonna include the 21st Century Grant people. Did anybody hear back from her today?
She was checking to make sure she had staff. And then she was gonna check with Norman to make sure that the bus, if there were any buses, could get there.
Well, we can make sure they have the busing piece.
But I haven't heard back from her since then.
Okay.
Robin?
Scott, it's half a day now, considering we're on that Route 4 corridor and they're heading up. Two hours from here.
It's, it still gives, it gives us plenty of time, in case the kids are on the bus, a little bit longer. It gives them plenty of time to get out and be fine. Nobody, nobody right around us is canceling for the day. Rangeley might be because that's where everybody seems to be going. And there's even been a rumor that they could be closing Route 4 from Strong up at a certain point in time on that day. Because they don't know where everybody's gonna go. There's not, there's not like this huge parking lots anyplace. And it's not like Rangeley Lake is a safe place to necessarily get on top of. I mean, normally, this time of year, it might be safe to be out on the lake, but it probably isn't if the ice hasn't already gone out up there. Don't know, so.
So Scott, when you say half-day, what time actually?
They would be dismissed at 11:30, like they normally hour and a half a day.
Okay, just clarifying. Joel, and then Holly?
Just wondering, is this, just making this one day a half-day and we're not trying to move a current part-day? I'm just wondering, I mean, we've gone through a lot of days already where it's either turned to half-days of weather or all these other things that have happened this year.
The reason I'm not requesting for it to be, to move another half-day around with it is because we're gonna be letting staff leave a little bit earlier than they normally leave, so they wouldn't actually have the PD time that they would have on one of those other days.
I did do a little bit of calling this afternoon. SAD 9 is gonna have early release. Derrigo's gonna have early release. RSU 10, no change, no early release. Morana Cook, no early release. Gardner, no early release. Winthrop, no early release. Haldale, no early release. And RSU 12, no early release. SAD 52 is voting on it tonight as well.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Jody?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Joel?
No.
Polly?
No.
Tasha?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes. So moved? You got your list of appointments, new hires? Don't forget, April 11th is the school budget referendum meeting, 6:00 PM here at the high school. Will not be a regular meeting that, that time. It's just a, it's a referendum meeting. More papers. And then our next board meeting is April 25th, here at the high school, finance committee meeting at 5:30. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Tasha, do we have a second? Elaine, roll call, please.
Robin?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Tasha?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?